Go ahead and call the meeting, is that okay? Call the meeting to order. All right, everyone stand for the pledge allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
To public, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome. Welcome to the Duxbury School Committee's first listening forum. As the title suggests, tonight is an opportunity for the school committee to listen to the community. We will not be responding to comments or answering questions or having any type of discussion. There is no agenda for this meeting in order to give you, the community, the opportunity to speak about any issue. Consequently, open meeting law requires that the committee not deliberate on anything that is set this evening. As Chair of the School Committee, it's my responsibility to run an effective and efficient meeting according to our committee's policies. I want to first highlight that we ask that all speakers be respectful of other speakers, students, and employees. And we recommend speaking generally about any issues that you wish to address without identifying any particular employee or student or releasing any otherwise confidential information about your child. Please note that while a parent may choose to release private information about their own child, presenting information about another individual which may be confidential, health or medical information or considered to be rumor, may violate the privacy rights of that individual. As Chair, I will provide a caution. But if the speaker continues, I will be forced to terminate privilege of address. This meeting is an opportunity for members of the community to address issues of concern about policy, budget, administrative matters, or other items within the scope of the school committee's responsibility. Please share your ideas about how we can work together to improve the Duxbury Public Schools. We value your input and respective urgent views. We only ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes and refrain from airing personal grievances with individual members of the school community. Please note an additional caution that improper conduct will not be allowed if a speaker persists in improper conduct or defamatory improper abusive comment remarks. As Chair, I may terminate that individual's privilege of address. Defamatory remarks show me remarks that have been adjudicated defamatory. Improper inner abusive remarks shall mean obscenities, vulgarities, threats, or and fighting words or remarks likely to provoke a violent reaction. With that welcome, I will now open the floor to those who wish to speak. We are going to follow the same guidelines that we follow in public comments. So attendees can raise their hand. I am going to ask Dr. Antonucci to assist me with the technicalities of bringing folks over to speak. But again, I will be the one who will be, you know, keeping an eye on things and making sure that we're running an efficient meeting. So anyways, thank you, everyone, for joining us, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts. So Dr. Antonucci, do they go, do they kind of go in order?
They do. I'll just, I'll take them first.
One at a time. Okay, great. And then if you, when you come over, please introduce yourself with name and address, please.
Okay, first, Mr. Thali.
Yes, thank you. Drew and Gina Thali, 254 West Street. Gina and I have five children in the schools. We're an involved family in a number of ways. We don't just participate in activities and organizations. We engage with them, volunteer for them, and sometimes lead them. Never have I found an organization that is perfect or with perfect people. Nor have I ever found an organization not worth the time and effort to improve. This is certainly true for our schools. Having recently interacted with a broad cross-section of community leaders, both inside our school structure and outside of it, all of which contribute to the culture and fabric of Duxbury, there is a growing demand that there be positive change in our town's largest institution, our public schools. Not incremental change, but significant change. This sentiment is shared by people in many corners of our community. As such, I have three suggestions. One, I believe the committee is in the process of an annual review for the senior administrators. Please exert the kind of control and influence we elected you to have and do so with high standards across an array of executive leadership performance standards. Two, the biggest wake-up call for me this year was that we, as residents and taxpayers, have often failed in our duty to ensure transparency, integrity, and high standards by the people we elect and hire to fulfill critical roles. So please do not bristle or become defensive when you learn that a growing group of citizens are collaborating to discuss positive change in our schools. Instead, please engage with those discussions being had outside of this forum if possible. Lastly, no one person is good at all things. There is a time and a place for all types of leaders. Please tune into the time and place we are in now and ensure that Duxbury is best positioned to improve in very important and intangible and tangible ways going forward. This is not about money or sports or curriculum or policy even. It is not about popularity. It is about culture. We cannot wait for this change. Our children are getting older by the day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is labeled as TC.
Tad Clowland, 349 Franklin Street. The Duxbury School's policy prohibiting harassment defines sexual harassment in part as sexually oriented conduct that is unwelcome, including unwelcome leaders. My wife and I read the duck, the school superintendent being quoted in the Boston Globe is saying, "A student reported the gym teacher was creepy, but that was not enough to take action." We believe that student is our daughter. What she actually reported to the school and us was that she was pressured to perform squats, and after each squat, the gym teacher asked her to go lower. After first two, she reported he then said, "The next two are for me," and he stood behind her and watched. She reported this to the school and stated she felt he was creepy. The investigator refused to interview any other students in the class. We are told the onus was on us to bring forward witnesses. Is there any parent that would not agree that the actions described by my child would, if proven true by an honest investigation, constitute a clear violation of the school's policy prohibiting sexual harassment? What language should a middle school student use to describe an encounter they know is wrong? How is it that this administration can see a red flag and fail to honestly and diligently investigate this report? Especially when the superintendent has admitted he was on high alert for four years? In my opinion, this can only happen when the self-interest of the leadership outweighs the desire to seek the truth. There was an immediate outpour of support for our daughter, which has continued to grow because so many others see the failings in the school administration's lack of follow-through to properly investigate this report. While they can check the boxes and publicly say they followed their procedures, the integrity behind the process is grossly lacking. I remain concerned that some school committee members will continue to subscribe to the narrative created by the administration versus the school committee doing what hasn't been done. Find the truth, hold the school administration accountable for failures, and protect our children from sexually predatory behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna do a reminder to please be careful about the details of things that you're talking about. The next, please.
Mrs. Sarada.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tamara Sarada. I live at 521 West Street. I'd like to take my two minutes to talk about our experience with the special ed department in Duxbury. We moved here when my child started middle school. She's in 10th grade now. She's a special needs student and has been since kindergarten. And I'm sorry to report to you, but I want you to know that her time here has been terrible. She has gone from being a happy, engaged student with healthy self-esteem to a bullied, disengaged student who was completely overwhelmed and became severely depressed trying to survive her school experiences. I only have two minutes, but I'll share just a couple of our experiences here with you. I have many more. I've experienced teachers in IEP meetings rolling their eyes at me as I tried to advocate for my child. The IEP team not telling me the school had an emotional support program when my child became suicidal from the pressures of school and being bullied in 7th grade. I got her into that program because I refused to sign the IEP without it. I've had, we've had a teacher lie on her report about providing services when she didn't, and then the school district refusing to correct the report and provide the missing services. That went actually escalated to the state level when I filed a complaint against the district. The district fought me on that, and they were literally fighting to withhold services from an autistic child. That was their fight. That was the fight of the Duxbury School District. We've experienced the district not acknowledging my child's refusal to attend school in 10th grade because attending Duxbury High School made her want to kill herself. For three months, no one even acknowledged that. My child missed three months of school because the district made no effort to provide her with an education in a way that she could access it without wanting to die. I know that my child's teachers were aware of her state of mind and saw how much she was suffering. Not one of them ever spoke about that in an IEP meeting. Not one of them ever advocated for her. Not one of them tried to help her privately, yes, but never in an IEP meeting. It's this whole sense that the district is our adversary, not our friends. I don't feel like the district exists to help my child. My experience is that they don't want to help my child. My experience is that teachers are not free to speak up for children, to advocate for children. It's really a terrible relationship, and I don't blame the current director. It existed before she was in her office. And so, but, but it's just the general vibe of how special education functions in the district. Thank you.
Next up is, it's listed as Karen Nicole. I'm not sure what the.
Hi, this is Cara Clowland. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My address is 349 Franklin Street. I know my husband spoke earlier, and as many of you may recall, we spoke during the public comment on April 6th. Excuse me. At that time, we briefly touched upon our family's disappointment in the way administration handled the incident that my husband outlined for you earlier. And at that time, I had asked two things of the school committee. The first being to hold an open meeting to allow the community to be heard. I am very pleased that we are being given this opportunity. And I do hope that this is the first of many. So thank you to those of you that made this happen. I know that you are required to include time for a public comment on every school committee agenda. And if you recall, also during that public comment on April 6th, another member of our community highlighted that public comment is really only good if there is a follow-up response. I could not agree more. The public deserves an understanding of where our elected officials stand on the questions and comments that we raise. We deserve greater transparency to make sure that our elected officials are truly representing the community and not subscribing to the narrative created by our school administration. So therefore, I am now asking that in addition to required time for public comment, that you somehow add a time for status check or response to previous public comments and questions. Show us what you do with the questions raised or the information brought to you by the community. How do you show that you're listening and always keeping the goal of improvement in mind? I know you said you can't give responses, but we can't accept that anymore. We bring these things to the table because they are important. They need to be highlighted, and they need a response somehow. The second thing that I asked of the committee was for review of the policy and procedures related to reports of sexual harassment and questionable abuse. Shannon, I know you said earlier that you are not allowed to engage in any conversation, but at some point, I would like to know where that stands. Is that happening and by whom? There are very simple elements missing from that current policy and procedure. I know, because we went through it, and it failed. You may all think that you followed the policy and procedure, and perhaps you did, but things are missing from it. Things are missing. Not one member of the school community, not one, contacted my husband or I to let us know that a report was even made by our daughter. That's step number one. We were not even told. I praise her up and down for being brave and for advocating for herself and going to people that she trusted. Had she not come home and told us she did that, we would not have known. Shame on you for not calling us. Please, I'm giving you this feedback because I care about not only my children, but all the other children in that school. We all send our kids there for a lot of time. We need to know they are safe. We need to know that they are heard. And you have failed, me and my daughter. You can do better. No one's perfect, but acknowledge that it failed and do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no other hands up, Shannon.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, I do have one. Ms. Patrick.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Luba Glupatrick. I live at 600 Chandler Street. I have one child in the school system and another one that will be in the school system in about a year. So it's, 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 it's been a while, a little while since the, there's an independent investigation of the, of what happened on the, the football field and the, and the antisemitic calls. We, myself and a lot of the Jewish community have been mostly patiently waiting for the results of that. Maybe I have missed an email, but I thought that the last update was that the, the results were coming soon. I'm hoping that, that it's, that, that, that people aren't just hoping that this will go away. The Jewish community is still, still would like some closure. You know, I, I, I would like some closure for myself. I'd like some closure for my, for my children. You know, just to make sure that we're taking steps so that things like that do not happen again. That, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Want me to just say anything on that, Shannon?
No, I mean, I think we need to stick with the guidelines, because that's why we set those, right? And I want to respond to some and not to others.
Okay, next is Tom Garden.
Hello there. Thank you very much. My name is Tom Garden. I'm on Fort Hill Lane here in Duxbury. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. It's been 75 days since the news came out that the Duxbury football team was using antisemitic play calls. Yet there's still been no official apology from the Duxbury school leadership or for the football team to those who are impacted. It's been 55 days since news came out of a middle school teacher and high school hockey coach that was accused of sexually assaulting a middle school student. There still has been no apology from the Duxbury school leadership. Now, I know people will say we cannot comment on an ongoing investigation. But what I do know is that we can express our sympathy for the loss of a child. We can say that the offensive language used by the football team is not acceptable. It does not reflect who we are as a school or as a town, and that no matter the outcome of the investigation, we will not stand for this behavior. We are better than that. But instead, we have silence. Speaking of the report, where is it? The question was just asked. It's like the school leadership is hoping we forget and the clock runs out on the school year. Tragically, both issues we are dealing with here relate to the most basic requirement of our school system, the physical and psychological safety of our children. But instead, the administrators, I believe, are more worried about their image and reputation instead of being focused on the safety of our children. The school leadership's complete continued silence and lack of apparent leadership on these issues is deafening and terribly disappointing. The community put their trust in you. They voted for many of you, and they expect you to step up, but we are not seeing it. In the 1,803 words of the superintendent's speech on the 6th of April, 1,584 were about explaining how the school did nothing wrong. The remarks go into great length detailing the perfect and correct steps that have been taken, how it was not the administration's fault what happened, and how they are being misunderstood.
Mr. God, I'm gonna give you a two minute, there's two minutes.
I'd also, I'd also ask that you please don't put words in anybody's mouth, Mr. God. I'm not gonna sit here and have my integrity questioned with misinformation. So I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, but that's not acceptable.
No, that's fair. I think you're crossing the line on, on, on the rules that we established. So I thank you for your input.
Am I releasing?
I think so. I mean, we've, we've gone over the two minutes.
Give me one second here. Anne and Scott Fagan is the name.
Hi, my name is Anne Fagan. I live on Buckboard Road. My family moved to Duxbury a little less than two years ago for the school system. We have three kids, a second grader, kindergartner, and a future kindergartner. Prior to moving here, I was an elementary teacher in West Philadelphia. During the school committee meeting on May 5th, Dr. Klingerman highlighted some diversity, equity, and inclusion training programs and curriculum work that has already been implemented and some that will be implemented next school year for high school students. I'm urging the school committee to provide complete transparency regarding these programs and what is taught during these programs. I also ask that parents are notified of any changes or additions to the elementary and/or middle school curriculum regarding DEI training. As a taxpayer, I would like to know how much is being spent on these programs and how these programs contribute, contribute to the academic performance of our students, especially given the fact that we were informed by Dr. Klingerman that it will take two years to make up for the education lag that students experienced as a result of the pandemic. As a parent, I would like to know if these programs utilize critical race theory, which has become a very polarizing method of teaching diversity, equity, and inclusion. I want to make it very clear that I think that it's wonderful that our school system is tackling these difficult to discuss problems and issues. We can all learn how to make the world a better, more inclusive place, and that should start here in Duxbury. To have empathy and feelings for others is beneficial for all of our kids and will make our town an even better place to raise children. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Lachlan Cleary is next.
Hi there. It's actually Katie Cleary, 31 Chandler Mill Drive. Thank you for doing this this evening. It's actually kind of an appropriate segue after Anne's last comment, but I was just looking at the school calendar and the number of professional development days, and I think they're amazing. I think our teachers need them, and they're incredibly worthwhile. I was just wondering if for next year and going forward, if it might be beneficial to the school community to have either somewhere on the Duxbury website or just, you know, in general, better descriptions of what the professional development days are, who's leading them, and how they're then directly used in the schools and in the classrooms. I think that, again, like I said, I think they're incredibly beneficial and our teachers get so much good out of them. I just don't think that we always understand what they are and how they're then benefiting our children's education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Deirdre Wyler.
Good evening. My name is Deirdre Wyler, and my husband and I have our lifelong residence of the town of Duxbury. We have three teenagers, two currently in the high school, and one recent graduate. My comments are relative to the investigation and timeline of the alleged conduct of John Blake. First and foremost, the prior comments this evening and in prior school committee meetings.
Mrs. Wyler, I'm just gonna ask you to be very careful about talking about other individuals, please.
I'm not going to talk about other individuals. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I said the prior comments on tonight's meeting and prior meetings are heartbreaking. My son, who graduated in 2020, was a successful contributor to the hockey team. Despite this fact, he was repeatedly targeted by Mr. Blake. And again, repeatedly, my husband and I reached out to the school administrators.
So, Miss Wyler, you, you are addressing an individual, you're naming somebody and discussing them. I, I really need to be more general in our comments and.
You want me to not reference Mr. Blake? I apologize. I'm, I'm having a miscommunication, I suppose. Or you don't want me to reference my son?
You're free to disclose your son's information, but you really shouldn't be discussing another member of the school, well, previous member of the school community. We have to respect confidentiality. So just, just, you know, please share your sentiments and your concerns, but please be careful about the details. Thank you.
Certainly. My, my comments are regarding my conversations with school administrators relative to a certain former member of the community. We repeatedly reached out to current school administrators for action. We were consistently met with blockades and barricades. Frankly, we did not have the level of alleged conduct, obviously, that others have engaged with, but our complaints were not, were not even entertained, frankly. My understanding of the role of a coach in our school, school community is a year-to-year contract. Each year, a coach has to undergo a review. My suggestion to this school committee is that you might want to firm up your policies and procedures with regards to those annual reviews of coaches. We were repeatedly lied by the, by current members of the administration about what was going on with this former member of the school community. And again, the former member of the school community was allowed to reengage in a new annual contract for, for coaching duties. I frankly have an issue with that. I have an issue with that because I have three sons. Three sons that have looked up to coaches and teachers as role models and looked up to administrators as role models. And I feel like these three sons have been left out to dry. Yes, this isn't the most crucial portion of their education, but hockey is a big part of their life. Now, having said that, I would like to understand what the plan is moving forward. We're almost in June. We don't have a hockey coach. It hasn't been posted. You've got a number of kids that are looking at alternative schooling options for the remaining years. We should have some sort of communication on what the timeline is for recruiting a coach, replacing a coach, looking at the current assistance that were, that have been sort of passed through throughout the years. So my suggestion is that the school committee take a finer look at that. I, I, I'm well-versed in the way that the, the way that the, the rules are with regards to appointment of those coaches. But I think, given the sensitivity of the matters that are at hand, that the school committee oversee that at some point.
I think, thank you for your input and your suggestion.
Jeffrey Bolster. Mr. Bolster. You're on mute. I'll put him back, and then we can bring him back.
Okay.
Martha Dennison.
Hi there. Thanks. It's Martha Dennison. I live at three twenty Standis Street with my husband Wayne. We have one child who graduated Duxbury Schools in 2012. We have a child at the high school now, and we have a child who's going to be promoted from the middle school next month. And as most of you are aware, I often attended and participated in school committee meetings back before it was cool. As much as I love the convenience of watching a school committee meeting live on Zoom, I have to admit that I miss those meetings. Specifically, as recently as two school years ago, I found that the school committee members embraced public comment in a way that encouraged dialogue between the members and the meeting participants or the meeting attendees. I remember many opportunities to discuss various topics with school committee members, including most commonly, school budget. But there was give and take. There was active conversation. We talked about the best ways to communicate with residents. We talked about educating parents on important issues. We talked about advocating for community action. I remember those meetings as productive opportunities for dialogue. But at some point in the last couple of years, before the pandemic hit, but not too far in advance, I sensed a change in tone at school committee meetings. It started to seem as though school committee members were not interested in discussing issues with meeting attendees, especially in those cases where school practices were questioned. And for me, this tone really had a peak during the pandemic, even before the meetings became well-attended. I recall a meeting last April that was especially dismissive of parents' concerns. It was disheartening overall by its lack of dialogue. The relationship between the school committee and parents seems to have devolved as the pandemic continued, despite our district's impressive organization and the implementation of COVID protocols. But for some reason, it is felt that any attempts at parent engagement have been reframed by the school committee as a threat to the orderly operation of our schools. As you know, I'm obsessed with and I'm overly optimistic about the benefits of community engagement. And I want to be optimistic that tonight's event signals a sea change in the relationship between school committee and parents and residents of our town. I think we all know there's a lot of work ahead of us to get and keep our schools on track. Some of it's cultural, some of it's educational, some of it's social emotional, and some of it's financial. And ultimately, at the end of the day, for us to be successful, for school committee to be successful, for our community to be successful, I believe you need to return to an embrace of community dialogue. Not talking about personnel issues or pending lawsuits. I'm talking about engaging in the discussion of the way that we run our schools today and how we keep our kids safe today. I'm talking about inviting all opinions and points of view, being open to what parents have to say about our current challenges, and encouraging all residents to weigh in on the issues of the day, and then discussing the best way to approach the changes. I thank you for taking this important step, and I encourage you to go further. Thanks.
And try Mr. Bolster again.
Okay.
Mr. Bolster.
No. Okay.
It's like the last name is Heppenstall. I'm not sure. Beth Heppenstall.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can.
Sure. Hi, I'm Beth Heppenstall. I live on Blodgett Avenue. I have three children that have gone through or are still attending Duxbury Schools, including two boys in the football program. I was devastated by the recent events and heartbroken, but felt compelled to support the decision to terminate my good friend Dave Mamaron's position as a coach. My older son is a better man and person for having had Dave as a coach, and my younger son, Rob, will unfortunately not have that same opportunity. What I want to speak to is Dave Mamaron's teaching position. My son is a freshman at Duxbury High School. He is a struggling student during COVID, and his grades reflect this with some Cs. And during the semester, when those homework assignments aren't in, he can often show Fs and Ds. In all this, he has maintained an A plus in math, and I believe much in part of this is due to Tony Fisher and Dave Mamaron's teaching techniques. I am concerned that teachers are left vulnerable to their career security when they coach. There is a camaraderie and relationship on the field that is very different than in the classroom. And all I simply want to do tonight is plea for Dave Mamaron to be able to teach, keep his teaching job. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is, it just says Janine.
Hi, this is Janine Stanwood. I live at four sixty-four Washington Street. I have four children. I'm going to add on to the concern about communication. I have a football player who, during this whole process, we felt like we were in the dark about how things were going to proceed, how they wanted us as a team to proceed. And most importantly, at the end, when we are finally spoken to, parents were concerned about the investigation and asked questions, and we were told that we should directly contact the law firm, mostly if we had anything we could add, any insight. None of us really had much insight, so no one felt like they had a reason to contact the law firm, except I then found out that if you wanted to find out when your child was going to be pulled from class to be questioned by the lawyer, you needed to call the law firm or email them. So I emailed the law firm and asked when my son would be questioned, and they told me that they were going to follow the schedule provided by the school. So we could have been told that ahead of time. So we had some planning, whether we wanted counsel or to be there with our child. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tiger Reardon is the next name.
Yeah. Hi. Can you hear me?
We can.
We can.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. My name's Philip Reardon. I'm on Seventy Park Street. I've got three children in the school system. I have a sixth, a fifth, and a third grader. I've also been fairly active in the community in athletics and youth athletics. My, my comments are specifically broad in regards to the overall performance of the administration, both at the district level, but also in the individual schools in regards to some of the, the issues that went on. Three symptoms of what I would call a subpar response over the last, I'd say, at least eighteen months, if not two years, would be, number one, the COVID response. I was on many of the calls over the summer and voiced my lack of, lack of, I really didn't believe that the plan put in place was going to be adequate for students, specifically having teachers do both in-class and remote teaching at the same time. I thought that was a very ridiculous amount of pressure and expectations to put on teachers. Having done many trainings myself over, over the internet, I know how much time and energy it takes to engage. And I'm doing trainings for people in their thirties, forties, and fifties, not in their, in their formative years where the attention span is much less. So that was number one, and I voiced my concerns back then. And frankly, the, the performance of the teaching, and not the performance of the teachers, but the performance of the teaching at the overall level, I think, was subpar. The, the amount of education that my children received was not what I would consider adequate. And this is given the vast amount of time and energy, I believe, was put in by the teachers. Number two, the, the response to what has occurred in the football program, specifically after the termination of the head football coach, again, is what I would consider subpar. It's been over two months. I believe the job for head coach was just posted today. As someone who knows football very well, that's a huge vacuum of power in, in leadership, more actually, leadership, more importantly, than the power, I guess, power is the wrong word. But leadership that is given to these young men who have spent many years playing football. And again, we're looking at somewhere between eighty and one hundred and twenty kids in the Duxbury High School who have participated in the program. So that's anywhere from twenty to twenty-five percent of the male population of the high school has had no direction. And I'd be saying this if it were the music director that was terminated. I think two months to post the job is an absolutely inadequate, inadequate response. This should have been posted two weeks after. I mean, it's, it's, to me, it is absolutely just a very subpar response. And then finally, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're well over two minutes. So if you can just wrap up, thank you.
Yeah, wrapping it up. And then finally, the communication from the administration in regards to all these issues specifically around the investigation into the Dave Mamaron's teaching position, which I believe he should keep, has been inadequate as well. And I implore this school committee to look into improving the performance of the administration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Hussey is next.
Yeah, eleven Ouch Lane, Paul Hussey. I guess, Dr. Intouch, are you going to answer any questions that get asked tonight? I mean, about A, the football program, B, the hockey program, C, Mr. Mamaron? I mean, you know, a lot of people are asking questions, and I feel like we're just getting stonewalled again.
Yeah. I'm going to go ahead and step in and introduce myself, Shannon Moses, Chair of the School Committee. And I don't know if you were here when we started the meeting, but this was specifically called as a listening forum. And, and we laid it out at the beginning that we would not be commenting or talking. And I think we are all are, you know, feeling uncomfortable right now because we all do want to respond, and we all do want to talk through this. But this was not, the purpose of this meeting was not school committee deliberation or to provide answers for questions, but to listen to the community. So we are all trying very hard to just listen to you all and take it in. Okay?
Right. And we've been listening for like two months, right? And that's the point, right? So, okay, it's great. You know, we've got a posting for the football coach today, right? And are we going to get a posting for the hockey coach tomorrow? I mean, it's great that we're going to listen here, but when are we going to get some answers? I mean, I think there's been about thirty questions that have basically asked the same exact thing about football, about hockey, about community, about, you know, Coach Mamaron and Mr. Mamaron's teaching job. When are we going to get some answers?
Yeah. And I will say, we definitely hear you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So we're getting more of the same. Appreciate it.
Next is Rachel Stedleman.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Hi, Rachel.
Hi, John. Thank you for taking my comments. First, I'm going to be a little personal, and then I'm going to get a personal for myself, not anyone else, and then professional. First of all, many of you in the community know that I have a child who's severely disabled. My child cannot speak up for himself and needs every one of his basic needs attended to because he can't care for himself or keep himself safe. When he was thirteen years old, I was invited to his school in Marshfield as a surprise. I walked in the doors, and standing at the end of the hall was my child. And for the first time, I saw him standing in a gay trainer, and he started taking steps towards me. And I listened to two high school boys who happened to be in the building start laughing and say, check out the retard. In addition to that, he's been left in a van in ninety-four degrees by himself while someone caring for him went into a store to buy themselves protein shakes. Thankfully, he was removed from my son's home before I got there. I know, I know the feeling of parents needing to know their children are protected. And I will promise that that is a focus of us going forward. I was recently elected as the Vice President of the Teachers Union, and the only reason that I have decided to take on an additional role is because I think unions are wonderful, but they can tie the hands of some of the people making the decisions about incidents that occur that concern all of us as a community. I want you all listening to understand. I've heard some comments about whether or not teachers were doing their part this year. Then, on average, I go to bed at midnight, working a full day, not using the restroom or eating lunch to make sure that I am giving my best to the students in this community because they're all I care about. I need everybody to understand that. And I think maybe one of the things I'd like to do going forward is represent what we do in a better and more productive way so that families can have a clear understanding of the work and frankly, the magic that's being done in some of our classrooms to protect your children, to love them, support them, and encourage them to be the best versions of themselves that they can be. I understand your pain, your sadness over some of the recent events. And again, I just want to reiterate that sometimes, all times, that, you know, we all want to be protected in the workplace. But one of my, one of my reasons for being part of this union is to make sure that while we as teachers are protected in our duties, we're also able to protect your children. And I want you to understand that administrators also do feel that way and often have their hands tied. And I, I, I just need to have that said. And I respect everyone's comments tonight. I encourage people to get engaged in the education of your children. I'm going to request that the Clipper gives as much dedication to education in the community as it does to sports because I, I think both are important to our kids, but maybe not equally represented. I'm not alone in telling you that your children matter so much. And thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Bolster again. We'll try again. Mr. Bolster or Mrs. Bolster?
Hello. Can anybody hear me out there?
Now we can. Now we can.
Okay, Ash, I got it. Talking with my daughter, I'm sorry. I've lived in, lived in town over fifty years. I graduated in nineteen seventy-four. I've known Coach, I can't reference names, I guess, but the disposition coach, I would say, Coach Mamaron. I've known him and his family since two thousand and five, when he was first hired for the job. I think he's an excellent man, and he's a real mentor for the boys. You know, I don't really know how it transcends into, you know, his teaching position, but he gets everything out of the boys that he could possibly can. And they, in return, you know, give him their every last effort as well. And you know, he does, he goes over and above what's called for to get them into the, you know, the best colleges possible. And he, he really, he really is a mentor for the boys. And I would, I would say it's a total disservice to the town and to the boys that he might lose his job of not only as a football coach, which I'm very sad to say he's probably going to lose, but as a teacher, I think it's, it's very, it's, it's, it's not good for the town. It's not good for, I think he, he needs to stay in that position. And I think he's a well-rounded coach and teacher, and I would really like to- I would really like to see him stay in that position. Pretty much all I have to say, but I'm sorry, you know, I just want to touch on some of these other parents' comments. All my children have already graduated, fortunately, and I know my daughter was younger. She was bullied in high school. I don't think it's anything that's certainly Ducksbury is unique in, I think it happens in every town, unfortunately, but you know, what happened with the hockey coach, that is very disturbing, you know. But these things happen and I'm really sad for the parents and for their children as well to see that, you know, this sort of thing goes on, but hopefully everything can work its way out. I'm fully supportive. You know, like I said, Mr. Mamron, and I hope he can retain his job and like I said, I think it's going to be a disservice to the town. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and good luck with your young parents. And this is a great town to live in. I've lived here a long time. And there's nowhere else I'd rather live. So you guys take care, have a good evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Next is Sean Regan.
Yes, thank you. Sean Regan, Otter Rock Road. I have two sons that have gone through the Ducksbury High School system. And I wanted to just speak on behalf of Coach Mamron as an educator. Both my sons played football for Coach Mamron and had an absolutely incredible experience, not only athletically, but as young men. And I think we have to recognize Coach Mamron's gifts as an educator and a coach. He wasn't simply a tactician on the football field. He was an educator of young men. And that should really count for something as we consider his future and his value as a member of the school community in Ducksbury. The value he's brought to countless young men. And you probably are aware of the thousand or plus signatures of parents who would agree of the good work that he has done for their sons in guiding them and mentoring them, which is said by the previous speaker. He brings a commitment to kids that you don't often see with educators, a full commitment, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I've witnessed it. It has to be recognized. It has to be appreciated. He should be in this school system. He does things that you're probably not aware of for kids and will never be aware of. But I've seen some of those things. He's a special individual who should be in this school system. I also would just like to say that I don't agree with his removal as a football coach. I think what was done was wrong. The use of that word was insensitive and wrong, but it was a mistake. And it was a chance to learn. It's not a time to take a thirty-year, fully committed educator and coach and toss him aside for expediency. Coach Mamron is too valuable as an educator to even consider removing him. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for sharing your comments.
Mr. Proudey. Mr. Proudey, you're on mute.
Hey, John, sorry about that. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we do.
Good evening, everybody. Jim Proudey, fifty-nine Molton Road. We have two daughters that are in the system currently and a son who graduated Ducksbury High School in two thousand and twenty. My comments will be brief there in regards to Dave Mamron. Dave is a great person and unbelievable mentor. He has done dozens to help my family and close friends. But what is amazing is literally the hundreds of stories of good acts of kindness for students all across Massachusetts that I've heard from others in the time I've lived in Ducksbury. And the funny thing is, most of those stories had nothing to do with football. Terminating his coaching is devastating. I implore you to retain Dave as a teacher in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is listed just as Jerry.
Yeah, good evening. Durham off the twelve ninety-six Tremont Street. So I have one daughter in the school system now and one to come in in a couple of years, but back in two thousand and eighteen, I was a volunteer hockey coach for the high school boys team. And a lot of people have been asking, what did the administration do when the first allegation against the hockey coach came out? What they did was they removed him, left me alone to coach a state playoff game by myself. And the only words from the administration were, if the media comes to you, decline, comment. Fast forward seven months, I was informed by the principal of the high school that my volunteer contract was no longer good. Twelve out of the fourteen remaining players spoke with the principal. Fourteen of the sixteen remaining parents sent a letter signed. And the administration's solution to the issue was to remove the low man on the totem pole. It took three weeks for me to get a phone conversation with the principal. The principal stated to me, I do not know you. I know your mother-in-law, who has been in the school system for twenty-two years. I've met your daughter and you have a great family. And when asked why I'm being removed, he had no answer. I think with the whole town, the administration is sweeping stuff under the rugs. Sweeping stuff under the rugs. I coached for eight years prior with zero complaints.
Jerry, we're at time. We need, and we also need to be a little bit careful about allegations. So I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
Yep, that is fine. My second comment would be that if said coaches are heard or seen doing things, there are others around them at the time. Those people need to be investigated as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer Walsh.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Hi, good. We can hear you. Thank you.
For having me. I wanted to offer my time to you because I worked in the Ducksbury School System for a number of years. And I would like to offer some support as we are in a listening mode this evening for Dave in the classroom. I have spent time with students in his classroom directly. Him and Tony Fisher run an unbelievable classroom that supports not just the boys, not just athletic children, but students that will need some mentoring and maybe some confidence. It would be a tremendous loss to our system to let yet another excellent educator slip through our fingers. I think that I alone in speaking only for my family, have brought to the attention to the administration, realizing your hands are tied several times with tenure, teachers that should be reprimanded and should be perhaps cornered. And it doesn't occur, but this is one teacher that should be elevated. He has stood out for children that sometimes cannot have the confidence or do not have the confidence to speak for themselves. And being that you're in listening mode, I need you to hear it loud and clear. This is a person that will be a tremendous loss for Ducksbury School Systems. I implore you to really think carefully about having Dave still participate under your district. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The next to just label those, Chris.
Hi, my name's Kristen Outman from three thirty-five Chandler Street. Can you guys see me?
We can.
I'll be brief. I have three daughters that all went through the Ducksbury School System. So I'm one of the few parents, I think, that's calling in support of Dave Mamron. And the reason I wanted to reach out, my youngest one is a senior in college now, so they've been out for a little bit. But I can't tell you how many stories they've told me about David in the school system, standing up for kids with special needs, making them feel comfortable, going out of his way to make them fit in with the other kids. There's, the stories are too many to get into here, and I don't want to waste your time. I just want to say that my kids did very well at Ducksbury High. We came to the town of Ducksbury because of the schools. And we are, you know, just like anyone else, we had our complaints, but overall, we're extremely pleased. There were many, many good teachers, good administrators. And I got to tell you, Dave Mamron really stood out from the pack. And so I really just wanted to say that I think he's an incredible asset for the school system. I think he has gone out of his way many, many times to do what's best for the kids. And I think that's why he's been such a successful coach. He has the ability to make the the lesser athlete feel like they're a participant and contributor. I think he does the same thing in school. He makes people feel comfortable, makes them confident. And when people are confident, they do better. And he's the kind of person that makes sure he brings that out of everyone. So I just wanted to say to you guys that I am very grateful for the education my daughters got at Ducksbury High School. And they're all doing great. And I think it's the reason we moved to Ducksbury is because of schools, and we're very happy. And Dave Mamron played a big part in the success of my daughters. They did have a little experience with David. David helped out coaching on the girls hockey team. And that was an incredible experience with David and our friend Wyler. And I've watched David play, you know, work to place kids in colleges. And I think he's a great asset for Ducksbury High. So I'd hate to lose him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr..
Joe Coletti.
Yes, hi, Joe Coletti, one thirty-three Meeting House Road. And I'm a friend of Dave Mamron's, and I just know what a great guy and teacher it is for Ducksbury to have him in the school system. I've known him a long time. And I think one of the reasons why I moved to Ducksbury was because of the school system and put my kids through a good school system. And Dave was a big part of that. So I just wanted to make sure that people know what a great friend and teacher he was and an influence and to keep him, to keep him going. And let's not lose a good teacher and a friend. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Owen McCarthy.
Yeah, hey, how's it going? Owen McCarthy, graduated two thousand and eight. Dave Mamron has been one of the figureheads of the school system, you know, inside and outside of the school with athletics as well. But it's more than that. I think, you know, most of you have probably already seen it. There's about twelve hundred signatures on a petition, excuse me, for him to keep his job. And a lot of the folks that I saw sign that are, you know, kids that have graduated over the last twenty-odd years and had a phenomenal experience under Dave, both as a coach and a teacher. Personally, I was going through a lot of, you know, issues growing up in Ducksbury. And Dave started coaching my sophomore year. Around that time, I became more familiar with Dave. And he pretty much turned my life around for the better. And it took me under my wing, both in school and on the football fields. So just on that, you know, I've known Dave for about fifteen years. The community as a whole embraces him as a phenomenal human being because of what he does, you know, echoing what everyone else has said. Just as far as how much he works to get kids placed in college, get him through school, let alone just high school, but, you know, make sure everyone continues to succeed for the better. So, you know, I'm endorsing Dave completely to keep his job and I hope you guys make the right decision. And please consider the petition that has tons of both signatures and letters that people have written in with his support. So, thank you.
Mr. McCarthy, before you go, I didn't catch your street address. Could you just state that for the record?
Six Mile Brook Road.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Lee Kennedy. Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to unmute. You can hear me. So I'm essentially Lee Kennedy, thirty-eight Bay Pond Road. I'm essentially a lifelong resident of Ducksbury. I graduated high school in nineteen eighty-two. So you can do the math and figure out how old I am, but I have been very involved in the community over the years. After I graduated and came back from college, I started coaching the high school hockey team for a few years. More recently, I have been, I served on the Ducksbury Rural and Historical Society for many years. I served on the Permanent Townwide Building Committee for the town. And I served on the School Building Committee to facilitate the construction, the development, construction of the new high school and middle school. So I'm a very involved community member, as I said, a lifelong resident. I have gotten to know Dave Mamron personally over the course of the last fifteen years, both in multiple capacities, both as a teacher of students, as a coach, and as a person involved in not just the Ducksbury community, but the broader community across the state in helping children. I serve as the Board Chairman at the Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester, who serves the most diverse neighborhood in the city of Boston, the most diverse neighborhood in our state. Dave actively got engaged with his football team and kids from special needs that he knows and teaches and involved them with the Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester, doing anything from jacket drives to football clinics, inviting the kids down here for games, personally involving himself and the team members to get to know the kids from Dorchester. This is the type of person that Mr. Mamron is. He, you know, social media does a horrible job of allowing people to persecute people that they don't know. Mr. Mamron is, has great moral character. Was there a mistake made by the football team, by the kids on the football team? Yes. Is he suffering tremendously from that? Yes. Has he learned from that experience? Yes. I think we could have done a better job as a community, learning from that rather than firing him for means of expedience and using him as a scapegoat. We should be standing up for people like Dave that do the things that they do off the football field and in the classroom. There are many kids that struggle to just to do day-to-day, just to get to school, that Dave reaches out to, make sure they get to school, make sure they're involved, and gives them and inspires them with confidence to feel good about themselves. Losing someone like this as a teacher in our community would be a dear grave mistake. And I can't implore on you more to give this the full comprehensive consideration that it needs for the person that he is, not the person that's unnamed. for the person that he is, not the person that's unnamed and anonymous and some individuals who don't know him and personally persecute him and say things about him that are false. Yes, I know. I'm running out.
Yeah, thank you though.
I, as I, as I said, I'm I'm deeply involved in the community. I care about Ducksbury. And I care about making good decisions for ourselves. And I implore upon you to really evaluate and consider who this person is as a person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
It's next is labeled as Zach. Mr. Mrs. Zach.
If you can unmute yourself.
I'll put them back and bring them back in. Oh, there they go. Oh, no, I I'll keep them in the queue. Next, Marcy.
Good evening. Thank you so much for this listening session. Can you hear me?
We can.
We can.
Thank you. Um, my name is Marcy Goldberg Bracken. I'm at one Tinkers Ledge Road. I am the very, very proud granddaughter of an Auschwitz survivor and a Dachau survivor. My father was born in Germany in a refugee camp. And my identity and who I am has always been very, very connected to the Holocaust and to World War Two. I have nothing to say about Coach Mamron. I've never met him. It seems he has a tremendous amount of support in this town, which I think is wonderful. But I'm not sure how this situation has turned into just focusing on one particular coach, one particular person, and how we as a community have not taken a step back and acknowledged that we have some issues with systemic racism. And what are we teaching our children? I would love to see us as a town to stop focusing on one person, stop focusing on the coach and focus on the larger issue at hand. And the larger issue at hand is that we are setting forth into the world children who have biases, children who think differently of other people because of their religion, their background, the color of their skin, the shape of their eyes. This is not who I thought we were as a community. And while, again, I've never met the coach, I'm I'm here the wonderful, wonderful stories about him. I'm sure and I believe in forgiveness and one-time mistakes, but that coach is not what we should be talking about as a community. I know children who have told stories of pennies being thrown at them in the high school hallway for being Jewish, for eyes being slanted, making funny funny faces at them as they walk down the hall. Why, why isn't this what this conversation is about? Why aren't we standing up anti-racism? There's a term out there now, acknowledge it, teach against it, learn from one another. The greater issue here in our town is that we have a problem with systemic racism, not one person. And and that term Auschwitz, it ran deep. I will tell you my grandmother's number on her arm was one five three oh six. I know that. And it's not just a word for some people. But again, why are we teaching our children that it's about one coach and not about the fact that we have a much greater issue to tackle, which I believe as a community, we all obviously very much so care about our community, care about our schools, care about our children. Let's go to the root of how this all started so that it doesn't happen again. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments.
Lisa Bunzel. I'm getting an error message. Not available to talk. I might have to promote her to panelist to allow her to talk, just just so you know.
Lisa. Would you like to comment?
I'm gonna put her back for a moment.
Okay, try. Shall we try Zach again?
I'm gonna try Zach again, yes.
Hi, can you hear me?
We have you now.
Hi, thank you so much for taking allowing me to speak. I just wanted to express my gratitude to Dave Mamron for all he's done for both of my children who went through Ducksbury High School academically and on the field. My son had the pleasure of being coached by Dave and also volunteered coached for the high school football team. And thinks of Dave as someone who he wishes he could be as amazing as and as inclusive as. And he truly looks up to him as someone who teach teaches him and has taught him how to be an incredible man and someone who is open and inviting of people of any race or religious belief. He has never, he is the least prejudiced or not inclusive person that my son has run across and has taught him so much about what is right about being an incredible person and including people of all religions and races and just about being a good person and doing things for people that are the right things to do. And I just wanted to make sure that people realize that it would be a huge disservice to the community if Dave Mamron was not allowed to continue to influence children's lives in the positive way that he has so many.
Before you exit, can we get your name and address, please? I didn't catch that at the beginning.
It's Eileen Zach, and I'm at one oh five Bay Ridge Lane.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to see if Miss Bunzel, if you can hear us and you still would like to talk. Okay, here we go. Came up as a
Yeah, looks like the hands are back up again.
Okay. Matthew Bunzel.
Yeah, how's that?
That's good.
Thank you for your patience. I want to start off by thanking the board and everyone that was involved in putting this together and the time tonight. We appreciate it. First off, to the Clayton family, the Wilder family, and anyone else who has had deal with these accusations, our heart goes out to you. So there's a lot of people supporting you with you. We have three children in the school system, and they've all had great experiences so far. And I will say that the lack of communication that we seem to be having between the board, the schools, the community, and specifically the parents of some of these families is a little bit disturbing. My question would be for the board, and if we could get a definition or description of what is high alert? What does high alert entail? And how does a staff member who is on high alert allowed to continue certain functions? Specifically, scoliosis exams on young boys is concerning. Was this an oversight? Was this a decision that somebody made and who made that decision to allow something like that to continue? And then lastly, I know it's been asked a few times this evening, but when can we expect to get some of the answers? Tremendous amount of answers that have been asked tonight, addressed or answered to the town, the community and these families. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Looks like we have no more hands raised. I will share with everyone that our next regularly scheduled meeting is, oh, here we go, Kelly Barlow.
Ms. Barlow.
Yes, hi.
Hi, we can hear you.
All good. Yes, hi. Thank you. I know it's been a long meeting. My name is Kelly Barlow, and and I have my fifth child, who is a freshman going through Ducksbury right now. So I have five kids going through the system. And my four older kids were all educated by Coach Mamron. Two of them were coached by Coach Mamron. And I just want to express my gratitude to Coach Mamron for how he handled my kids in the educational system. He was instrumental in my old on Christopher's education. Children have nothing but positive things to say about their experience within Ducksbury High School with Coach Mamron. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm not sure how to read this. It's Bobby. Bobby Ellie.
Hi, I don't know. Robert Boyle, twenty-nine Tree Top Lane. I've heard the stories here tonight. I'd like to say Coach Mamron is a tremendous coach. His record shows it. The stories here tonight tell us that he's a tremendous teacher. And he's a tremendous human being. And my family would implore you to keep him on as a teacher. He's a great asset to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle.
Natalie Eisner.
Hi, I'm I'm Ashley Eisner. Actually, Natalie's my daughter's name. I don't know why it's on here. Natalie's a sophomore. I'm her mom, and I'm not in school. I'm fifty-four. I live at three forty-six Congress Street in Ducksbury. I just, I joined this meeting rather unplanned this evening. And I I have listened and I've educated myself to a certain degree about the situation with the the football team this year. I don't, I've had three daughters, two have graduated from Ducksbury, one is still there. So I cannot comment on Mr. Mamron as a person. I don't know him. I think I might recognize him if I saw him, but that's the extent of it. I I my children have never had him as a teacher. However, I am so incredulous at, you know, there's a tremendous amount of support for him as a person. And I'm sure he he, like all of us, is a wonderful person to many people and has a record of, you know, of helping kids and being a wonderful human being. That being said, the situ, I I'm, I can't believe that people are looking beyond the situation and are failing to recognize, he does have, you know, he is a position of you know, it's a public position in this town, especially this town that football is so huge. My daughter is a cheerleader. So it just saddens me to think that people aren't, they're, it's great to say he's a wonderful human being, but in the same breath, perhaps address what was said. We're an interfaith family. And it's it's hurtful that 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 is not part of the discussion. And that's basically all I have to say. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Eisner.
Don Hadley.
Hi, it's actually Warren Hadley, fifty-seven Shipyard Lane. I'm a twenty-year resident. We've got four children attend the Ducksbury School System. I would say, well, they're all graduated, first of all. They're no longer in the school system. Our last one graduated last year. But I can confidently say that they all had a very good, well-rounded experience in the Ducksbury Public Schools. We're happy to have been here for the twenty years, raising them, raising them here. My wife and I are both saddened by what happened on the football field earlier this year. And obviously, we don't condone what took place there. But of the four children, we have two boys played football while they were in the high school. And while they had lots of great experiences in the Ducksbury School System, I think they would say that their football experience was certainly the best part of their high school years from that perspective. But I want to provide support for Dave as a teacher at the high school. I also had two girls attend, Madison and McKenna. Neither of them played football, obviously. Dave helped our eldest daughter Madison, I would say, excel in school and overcome a learning disability. He was instrumental when she was a freshman and getting her the help that she needed to succeed in school to further her education. He worked with her to get her tested and to initiate a five oh four plan that she needed because she had a process and delay. So she needed extra time for her studies, for exams, et cetera. And that carried throughout her high school and college career. She has just graduated on a full scholarship from Teachers College at Columbia and earned her dual master's degree in special education and high school science. She slated to begin work in the fall as a biology teacher at Public School forty-seven, the American Sign Language and English High School in New York City on Twenty-third Street. She's had many great mentors to get her where she is today. I, Dr. Irvine comes to mind. But I would say Dave was a key contributor in her high school years as well to get her on the road to where she's been. And we've heard a lot of stories here tonight. I know I know Dave has helped a lot of children in this community over the past fifteen to twenty years. And I'm confident that he will continue to do so in the future, if given the chance. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley.
Frank Tower.
Yes, hi, can you hear me? Yeah, hi, this is Frank Tower. I'm at four eleven Temple Street in Ducksbury, been a resident for, I guess, twenty-one years here. I've had three kids go through the the school system, two girls and one boy. My son played football for Dave and also had Dave as a teacher. And like the previous speaker, my Dave helped us tremendously navigate some of the the processes and procedures within the school system to help my son with certain accommodations that he needed. He's gone on, it's been a huge help for him as he's been progressing through college. And I, it, what was, you know, the incident on the football field is extremely unfortunate. I don't condone it, but people make, you know, mistakes happen. I think you know, as others have said, we need to look at this as a learning experience. The the football players and and future football players have lost a coach. And I would really hate to see the students, particularly the special needs students and folks that need accommodations, lose an asset like Dave, who has the years of experience, knowledge, and, you know, the temperament and and, you know, moral standing to help those future kids. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tower.
Mr. Festa. I'm sorry, Amy. I'm sorry about that. I hit the wrong one.
Amy, unmute yourself.
I'm gonna put her back. Mr. Festa. There you go.
Hello, this is Chris Festa. I live at fifty-seven Cross Street. I've got three children, along with my wife. We've been in town for thirteen years. All three of our kids attend Ducksbury Public Schools. I do have one football player currently. I like to echo a lot of the sentiments that were already spoken to with regards to Dave as a human being, as a coach and as a teacher. None of my kids had Dave as a teacher, but they they're well aware of him. They've seen him around town on many occasions. And my son has benefited greatly from from playing for Dave. He's been a tremendous coach and tremendous asset. And I think, I think most people that know Dave would, would say the same thing. And that's why you're hearing many phone calls saying very similar, similar things and have similar things to say and anecdotes about Dave, not only as a coach, but as a, as a man in the community and all his charitable endeavors and all the help he's given to, to these kids and these players and, and the non-players, the non-athletes, the non-football players alike. I like to support Dave. I just, I'd hate to see him lose his job as a teacher and as a coach. And I, I do think it was, I do think that action was too swift. I think it was guilty till proven innocent. And I think that a lot of things that have been said, a lot of the things that have been put out there on social media and these cesspool platforms such as Duxbury helping Duxbury. I'm not really sure who's, who's helping whom in that, in that regard. But the other thing I'd like to say, and I haven't heard many comments about this, but I for one am very uncomfortable hearing phrases such as systemic racism about our boys and about our students who are kids. We're talking about 14, 15, 16 and 17-year-old boys and girls for that matter. They're, they're kids, they're children. And for someone to mention that systemic racism is a problem, I, I just don't know where that comes from. As far as I know, the, the report, the investigation so-called, it, it's not concluded yet. There was no result that would have, that had been printed yet or, or spoken about. And a lot of these things are just anecdotal. And people, you know, we're, I guess we're a nation full of headline readers and we hear things and we see things and a lot of stuff has been said and, and written that I just don't agree with. I think a lot of people would agree with that. I'm not sure why we haven't heard that, but there hasn't been a whole lot of advocates for our kids. And that to me has been more than disturbing. You know, we used to be able to make mistakes and learn from them and, and move on. But, but these kids in particular, along with Coach Mamron, I mean, they've been publicly shamed. I mean, some of these op-ed pieces in the Clipper have been shameful. And I, and quite frankly, I'm embarrassed. I mean, some people can say they were embarrassed about the comments that are allegedly were said in a football game. I'm embarrassed by our reaction as a community. And we're, 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 we're casting a spursions on what 50, 60 kids? Who, who knows who said what, when and where? I mean, at this point, I, I don't know what facts have come out. But there's many people that I'm hearing from that, that think they know the facts and think they know the context. I beg to differ and I like to say that I'm very uncomfortable with, with phrases such as systemic racism being thrown out there as if it's, you know, as if it's a known commodity with our kids in the school system and this community. And I'd rather see our community rally around ourselves and give into the pressure from outside forces. And I gotta tell you, I think it's disturbing on, on a lot of fronts. And to wrap this up, I just want to, again, I want to support Coach Mamron as a coach, as a teacher and as a man in the community. And I also would like to say that I'm disturbed and embarrassed about how these kids have been treated for two months. I haven't heard or seen a lot of advocates for our kids, their children, and they should be able to make mistakes and move on. Not be publicly shamed in one op-ed piece after the other. You know, people pretending they know the situation and what was said and what wasn't. I don't know where they're getting these facts. But I'd like to see people dig into these things instead of reading headlines in social media posts from people that have nothing better to do than to opine on Duxbury so-called helping Duxbury. It's disturbing and it's a problem. And, and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Festa. Okay, I think, well, Jen Quinlan, you got your hand up just in time. I was going to say, I think we've, I think we're kind of hitting the end of this. So I'm just going to keep last, last call. Jen Quinlan will, will bring you over.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, it's actually Mike, Mike Quinlan, 195 King Caesar, parent of a senior daughter and a sophomore football player, Colin. I want to put a little bit of a different lens on this as we're closing in. And that's the, the lens of our children. Because I think that our children are really watching us now and how the adults treat each other around this Mamron matter. I think from their vantage point, they see a beloved coach, a special needs teacher. We made a mistake or maybe even accepted responsibility for somebody else's mistake. They also see that he admitted the mistake, accepted responsibility, apologized and committed to learning, healing and moving forward. And I'm pretty confident as a parent that that's a little bit of how the kids are thinking about it right now. And as a parent, I want to encourage my children. I think, you know, for the educators on the phone here, I know that, you know, you want the same things. You want to encourage that own it behavior amongst our children. And I fear that if Mr. Mamron loses his coaching job, his reputation, his teaching job, that the children will judge that as just too much penalty or maybe even scorched earth. In turn, you know, I'm afraid that they'll conclude that the consequences of admitting mistakes is an unacceptably risky course of action when they make the mistakes that all kids make. And I think that if we let that happen here, by way of example, we'll have failed the very children that we strive to turn into high-functioning adults, the very children that we're talking about here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinlan. Okay, in the interest of fairness, well, I think Dr. Anshu, she will let these last two folks up and then I think we, if it's okay with everybody, we'll wrap it up after these two folks. Okay? Is that fair? Pull over, Dave Massingham.
Mr. Massingham.
Good evening. My name is Dave Massingham. She's at Winslow Road, joining late after Marathon varsity baseball game. My wife and I and our two boys moved here nine years ago, in large part for the school and the athletics. I think the teachers have been great. So I just want to shout out for the teachers. I have two sons who played for Dave. The experience has been positive. I'm still not arms and clear on what happened. But much of what has been said and alleged is foreign to my kids' experience. And I'm quite angry about how the kids have been treated and painted with a broad brush. And that's all I have to say. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Massingham. All right, last, last one, and then we are going to wrap it up for the evening. It's been, it's been a not good, long meeting.
Sorry, Mr. or Mrs. Backland.
Hi, Doug Backland here. Eight Buckboard Road. I'll be brief. I just want to say that my two children had Dave, one who played football and one who had him as a teacher. He did an amazing job with both boys. I believe he's paid the price as a coach. I hope that doesn't spill over to his teaching position as well. My hope is that we can begin healing by treating Dave Mamron with forgiveness. Simple as that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, everyone, um, I just want to thank everybody participating in our first listening forum. I know the committee has already discussed the possibility of having more, so stay tuned. Our regular, next regular business meeting is currently scheduled for June 9th. And that, we do anticipate some of this policy work will be on the agenda for that meeting. And I suspect a few other items that have been raised this evening as well will probably be on the agenda for that meeting. So with that being said, I think I will call for a motion to adjourn. I move to your turn.
Second.
Okay, Julia.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Kristen.
Hi.
Shannon. Hi. Okay. Thank you, everybody for joining us. Much appreciated. Good night.